Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together freely and to make decisions. Lord, we pray that you would give us guidance as we serve the people of Apex. Pray for humility, pray for wisdom. Lord, we pray that we will love our fellow man and that we will take care of each other. We thank you for those who protect us, protect our country, fight for us overseas and locally, and those who have sacrificed life and limb, blood and treasure for this country and for the people. We pray all these things in your holy name. Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see everybody here tonight. If you did not get a chance to grab an agenda on your way in, there are more out there on the podium. They look like this, multiple white sheets stapled together. We also have a guideline for if you're planning to speak during public forum or a public hearing tonight, there are two things you need. One is the yellow sheet that gives you the guidelines, and if you missed it, feel free to go get it. The other is you need to put your name on the appropriate yellow sheet that's sitting right there on that ledge. Make sure you read the headings so you know you're signing up for the correct item. That will avoid any undue embarrassment on your part when I call your name and it's not the item you wanted to speak on. The town clerk will be picking those up in approximately eight minutes, so if you intend to speak during the public forum or public hearing, please do not hesitate. We now move through the presentation, since there are none, into consent agenda. Consent agenda are typically enacted by a single motion, and they are generally considered to be non-controversial items. However, if any council member wishes to pull an item to discuss later on this evening, they certainly may do so. At this time, I'll ask, is there a motion to approve the council, sorry, the consent agenda, or is there an item that somebody needs to pull?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to just say congratulations to Captain Gilbert on his retirement. I was unable to make his retirement ceremony celebration a few weeks ago, but he was a treasure that we had in our police department. I've known him for a long time, and so we were blessed to have him.
Thank you, and I think we all concur with that sentiment. Contextually, that's related to consent number seven, in case you've got your sheet. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion on the consent agenda, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously, three zero, which brings me to the point that I should point out, we do have a quorum tonight of three council members with two being absent. That is a quorum. With that, we will continue through the item that we have tonight. Regular meeting agenda, this is the item where we set our agenda for tonight. I know of no changes to the regularly planned agenda, so let me ask either town manager or town attorney or any council members if there's any recommended changes.
That's right.
All right, then if that's the case, entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as planned.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. The agenda is set. We now move to public forum. This is your opportunity to speak to us, and as the town clerk collects those sheets, we have a three-minute window where you can address us with any issue or item that is relevant to the town that we ought to know about, or a matter of Apex that you find interesting or praiseworthy. With that said, I look at the public forum sheet, and I see that there are no one signed in, so after opening the public forum, I will now close it. As a matter done, we now move into public hearings. Public hearing number one, Amanda Bunce is presenting. This is a possible rezoning, number seventeen CZ twenty, also known as Robert's Crossing Pud. Ms. Bunce.
To be real brief, the applicant has requested that this be continued until the August seventh town council meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there discussion from council, or is there a motion to continue to August the what?
Seventh.
Seventh. Is there a motion to continue to August seventh?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue this item until August seventh discussion. Now, if there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that item is continued until August the seventh. That takes us to public hearing number two. This is a rezoning application, number eighteen CZ fourteen, regarding about a third of an acre on Kelly Road.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is rezoning case eighteen CZ fourteen, nineteen twelve Kelly Road, being brought to us by the applicant JBI Building and Development Incorporated. To orient you with the site, this is Kelly Road here, so this is on the west side of Kelly Road. We have Kelly Grove subdivision here to the south, Apex Barbecue Road. Further south, further to the north, is Olive Chapel Road. You've got Beaver Trail here to the northwest. The property is .35 acre. It is currently zoned rural residential. The proposed zoning is medium-density residential, conditional zoning. The current 2030 land use map recommendation is medium-density residential. Bring you back here to the site, and again, this is just a partial rezoning, so it's just these little pieces here. These properties, or these portions here, rather, are vacant. They were formerly part of seven one one three Beaver Trail. They've now been recombined with this property over here. You will see that later this evening on the agenda, but these are currently vacant. The applicant conducted neighborhood meetings on January twenty ninth and March twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Those reports are included in your packet. In regard to the proposed zoning conditions, they are consistent with the zoning conditions approved November of two thousand and seventeen, because these portions here are being recombined with that property. So essentially, this is just to bring the zoning conditions so that they're identical for purposes of development. So all of them are the same. You'll find a complete listing of those included in your packet. They are our typical architectural standards for residential development, with the addition of note nine, that all homes shall provide adequate conduit to allow for the installation of a home solar system. Planning staff recommends approval of eighteen CZ fourteen with the conditions offered by the applicant, because the rezoning is reasonable, because the proposed zoning is consistent with the land use map recommendation, and the rezoning is reasonable and in the public's best interest, because it will allow residential uses to develop consistent with residential development in the area. I'm willing to take any questions at this time. The applicant is also here, should you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you. Questions from Ms. Rayfield from council?
All right, yeah, I have one. Was the, this is the large lot side of this overall project.
Correct, yes.
What happened, I'm curious as to, I mean, this is, it seems kind of odd, strange, maybe, that they're, what, did they forget about them? Did they?
No, so essentially, there's a land swap that occurred, so what it does is it evens it out, so that those lots will be more regularly shaped, and again, you'll see that momentarily. But essentially, that's what happened, was just a little bit of swap here to make it a little bit nicer for these lots to just develop a little bit more cleanly, if you will.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And at this point, I'll ask, does the applicant wish to speak? Or representative thereof?
Stuart Jones, Jones and Knossen Engineering. Just wanted to make sure y'all understood this was just a little land swap in the back that Joey actually purchased the lot behind the Winston subdivision and then recombined this, and we did work with the adjacent subdivision owners to, so that they got some land back. Some of the land came out of their subdivision, but we actually moved some back into their subdivision, so their subdivision total acreage stayed the same. But all the zoning conditions are the same, and this actually does allow us to add one additional lot to the Winston subdivision, because that one, the bigger corner poked down and close to where the road was coming in, and it was just difficult to get the depth for the type of lot that we're trying to do for this subdivision. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Jones?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I'll bypass Mr. Jones, who signed up. Thank you very much, since he just spoke, and move to Steve Madrich.
Thank you. The, we're basically here in support of the land swap. It was actually done out of a request from the existing neighborhood. We didn't want our neighborhood to shrink, and so as a request, presented it to Jones and Knossen and JBI, and he was actually willing to go forward with the actual swap to keep the actual footprint of our existing neighborhood, so we're quite appreciative of this effort. Thanks.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Madrich. And that concludes the list, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing or further matter back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion. Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, all. We now move to public hearing number three. This is case number eighteen CZ fifteen, approximately half an acre, and this is off of Mason Street, North Mason. Ms. Bunce.
Yes, the applicant has requested a continuance till the August seventh meeting.
All right, we have a request for continues to August seventh. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that is now continued to August the seventh. We now move to public hearing number four. These are possible amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, and Jenna Schaus is presenting.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to introduce Jenna briefly.
Please.
Jenna is, I'm happy to say, the newest permanent member of the planning department. She, her first day was Monday. She's now our long-range planner, but she's been working with the town for over a year and a half as an intern. I think that you'll see tonight by the quality of her work that we're very happy to have her here. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and Environmental Science. She was the valedictorian of her class at NC State and completed her Master's in City and Regional Planning at UNC Chapel Hill. So, without further ado, here's Jenna Schaus.
Very nice. Welcome, Michelle.
Hi, yes, thank you for having me. So tonight, you have a number of materials in front of you. So the first thing is the digital copy of the memo that presents an overall summary of the work that we've done on this project, and then there's an electric vehicle parking memo, and that's, yeah, that's on the surface. You don't have the hard copies of those two. And then you have a hard copy of the staff report, but what I'm going through tonight, it's going to be most useful to have the large olive and by seventeen document in front of you, because that's where we're referring to those page numbers. So I'm going to be going through proposed amendments to section eight point three, off-street parking and loading to the Apex UDO. So the purpose of this update, section eight point three hasn't received a comprehensive update since the UDO was initially adopted in two thousand. The purpose of these amendments are to update the off-street parking standards to present day and to provide clarity and completeness for situations where the UDO is silent or unclear, and to prepare for future trends in design, technologies, and multimodal travel. We're really trying to find a balance between parking supply and demand with these changes, and avoid any negative environmental, economic, or aesthetic implications of a parking supply that either exceeds demand or is less than demand. And let me know if you have any questions as we go through this, since there's a lot of material. So here's a timeline of review. So as you can see, a number of parties have gone through and reviewed this material, including the planning department, as well as a number of other departments in the town, and we've met with the development community, and then presented to the planning committee, and then planning board last week. We're here with you all tonight. And then here's a summary of the process. So there are a number of key sources that were used to develop these amendments. One of the main ones was the Parking Generation Manual, was put together by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, as well as some bicycle parking guidelines, and then we looked at a number of peer city ordinances to find best practices, and a number of site plans throughout town, as well as the latest parking literature. This really was an iterative and collaborative process within this department and reached out to people in the region. And we tried to keep these amendments within the context of Apex and focus on existing and future transportation needs. So proposed changes. So here's an outline of what I'm going to go through tonight, all the changes to the UDO. So the first is to set standards for parking maximums, and the second is to add text to allow on-street parking to be used to meet the off-street parking requirement. And the third is a new site layout requirement for the small-town character district. And then just some tweaks to the off-site parking section, as well as some ways where developers can reduce their minimum parking requirement. And then some design requirements for parking structures, as well as a new shared parking table, and a number of land uses we're proposing to reduce or change the minimum parking requirement, and then add some location requirements, as well as minimum bicycle parking requirements. So parking maximums, right now, or now we're on page one of the document, on section eight point three point two, the first three rows go into the details about parking maximums. So right now, there are no standards set for parking maximums in town, so this would set a standard for how that would work. And if a developer chooses to exceed the maximum parking requirement, they would need to submit a parking analysis to the planning director, and then there would be further requirements on those spaces if that's approved. And then the next one is on page two, in section eight point three point four, in the first row. So this would allow on-street parking to be used to meet the minimum off-street parking requirement, as long as it lies along the property's street frontage and complies with the Code of Ordinances. The next one is a new site layout requirement, and we're still on page two, at the bottom of page two. And this one only applies to new developments within the small-town character district, but excludes the central business district. And it would set it so that no more than one double-loaded bay of parking could be positioned between the building and the primary street. And the purpose of this is we really want to improve the streetscape and the vibrancy in that area, and prevent a sea of parking between the street and the primary building to improve access for pedestrians and cyclists. And then off-site parking. So right now, there are a number of uses that are ineligible from using off-site parking to meet their minimum off-street parking requirements, and these include convenience-oriented uses, as well as residential uses in restaurants. So we're proposing to remove restaurants from that list of ineligible activities, which would allow them to use adjacent sites to meet their minimum parking requirement. And then the next change to this section is to change the location requirement from four hundred feet to six hundred feet, to be consistent with the shared parking section. So here, now we're on page three. Here are a number of ways that we're proposing that developers can use to reduce their minimum parking requirement. The first one is tree preservation, and this one already exists in the UDO. We're simply going to reference that section so people know that it's an option. And then the next one is tree planting, and then the third is pedestrian access. So this is really meant to incentivize development in walkable and dense areas. And the next one is mixed use, and what I mean by mixed use in this case is a combination of residential and non-residential uses that's in the same building, and if it's at least two stories or more, it would receive an automatic ten percent reduction in the minimum parking requirement. And I know I'm going through this fast, so just jump in anytime. So parking structures. So right now, there are no set requirements for parking structures. So we've proposed some design requirements, as well as electric vehicle requirements, and that would set it at two EV spaces per parking structure. And then there's a lot more information in the EV parking memo about supply and demand and the cost of EV parking. So the shared parking table. So this is kind of a, this is a big table, so I'm just going to go through it kind of quickly. So it gets at the supply and demand of parking, and how multiple uses can share one space for parking based on the demand at a certain time of day in the week. I think it's more useful to go through an example. So if you use, if you, you look at this example, and you want to share parking between an office space and retail space of these sizes, ten thousand square feet and five thousand square feet, you can see that the parking requirement would only be forty-three spaces rather than fifty spaces, if you look at the demand throughout the week, because the highest requirement is set at forty-three spaces. So parking by land use. These are all the uses that we're proposing to amend the minimum parking requirement. So multifamily or apartment. So for each of these slides, I'm going to present the existing requirement, and then go through the proposed minimum parking requirement, and they're all going to show the proposed maximum, and that's going to be the same for each slide. So for multifamily or apartment, the existing minimum parking requirement is set at, right now, it's set at two spaces per dwelling unit, and we're proposing to reduce that to one point five spaces per dwelling unit with one to two bedrooms, and one point eight spaces per dwelling unit with one point eight, with three or more bedrooms, excuse me. And now we're, we're over on page five, jumped ahead, in section eight point three point two. So next one are amenity centers. Right now, there's no minimum parking requirement for amenity centers. So this would be, would apply only to single-family dwellings and townhomes, so not to apartments. And this is, the parking requirement would be based on the size of the subdivision, as well as the amenities provided at that subdivision. So for subdivisions with a hundred or more dwelling units, they would need to provide one space per three hundred square feet of clubhouse with gathering space, so if it's simply a restroom, that space wouldn't need to be parked, and then one space per one hundred square feet of surface area of the pool, so the actual wet pool area, and then two spaces per sports amenity. And then the, for, the next requirement is for subdivisions with less than a hundred dwelling units, and that has a similar parking requirement. The only difference is that they would only, they really need one space per two hundred square feet of pool area, so to make sure that we aren't over-parking these subdivisions that don't have as many dwelling units. So convenience store with gas sales. Right now, that's set at one space per two hundred square feet, and we're proposing to reduce that to one per three hundred square feet, based on what we found in other cities in ITE.
Can we go back one second?
Sure.
Sorry, to the pool requirement for small subdivisions. It seems to me a lot of these guys will just walk if it's a smaller subdivision. Is there any consideration about size of small subdivision? You know, if it's like thirty, I guess you'd have to have a minimum size of a subdivision to even have a pool though, wouldn't you, now that I'm thinking about it? Okay. I'll let that go. Thank you.
So, I don't know if I already went, for convenience stores, the existing minimum parking requirement is one per two hundred square feet. We're proposing to reduce that to one per three hundred. And then for financial institutions, right now, that's set at one space per one hundred and fifty square feet. We're proposing to reduce that to one per two hundred and fifty square feet. This is really due to the rise of online banking, so less of a need for parking at financial institutions. And then gas, fuel, and retail. Right now, that's set at one space per two hundred square feet. We're proposing to change the way that the parking requirement is calculated, and make it more so on the number of employees, because there are no convenience sales at these uses, so it would be one per employee. And I just, I want to show you an example real fast to show. The Lowe's Fuel at the Lowe's Food Shopping Center off the Peakway is an example of a gas, fuel, and retail, and these uses will typically share parking with surrounding uses. So grocery stores. The existing minimum parking requirement is set at one space per two hundred square feet, and we're proposing to reduce that to one per two hundred and square, two hundred and fifty square feet. And after meeting with the development community, they shared a similar sentiment that grocery stores are typically over-parked, so this is a more appropriate ratio.
Except for Costco.
Yeah.
Never a parking space there.
You can walk.
Play Lee Proctor across sixty-four?
And here's just a quick example of how the numbers would play out with this new parking requirement. So the Harris Teeter at Haddon Hall Commons off of West Williams Street, the existing parking requirement is two hundred and forty-four spaces, and that's how many they provided, but with these proposed changes, they would need to provide between one hundred and ninety-five spaces and two hundred and twenty-four spaces, along with the other spaces for the surrounding So office coworking space. This is a new one for, a new use for the UDO, and this came after, out of the meeting with the development community. And some local examples of coworking spaces are HQ Raleigh in downtown Raleigh, and American Underground in downtown Durham. And these are spaces where there are more people in a smaller space, so we might need more parking than a traditional office. So the existing requirement would need to meet the typical office space, set at one per three hundred square feet, and we're proposing to set that at Schedule C, so that would provide more flexibility, and they would coordinate with the planning director to figure out what the minimum parking requirement would be. So call centers. This is similar to the previous one, where there are a large number of people working in a small space, so rather than having the existing one per three hundred square feet, we're proposing to change that to Schedule C as well. Pharmacies. Right now, the minimum parking requirement for a pharmacy is set at one space per two hundred square feet. We're proposing to reduce that to one per four hundred square feet. And we're on, let me keep it, we're on page seven, row ten, if you want to follow along. So commercial uses. The main purpose of this amendment is to condense the parking schedule in section eight point three. So there are a number of retail uses set at one per three hundred square feet, but there's a general retail set at one per three hundred square feet, so we're going to eliminate all of those, and they'll simply refer to the all-other uses at one per three hundred square feet. And then similarly, there are a number of uses that are retail set at one per two hundred square feet, so we're going to eliminate those, and they would refer to the all-other uses as well. So bicycle parking. After looking at a number of peer city ordinances and local development ordinances, such as Cary, Durham, Wilson, and a number of others, we found that bicycle parking has become standard. And the spec that the Parks and Rec Department has for one inverted U-Rac is a hundred and eighty dollars, and that accommodates two bicycle parking spaces. And then on page two, you can see the design requirements that we're proposing, and I'm going to go through those on the following slide. And then there are a number of bicycle parking minimums, and you can see the details and the research for those on page eight. And then another change that we're making for bicycle parking is adding decorative bicycle parking to the list of community amenities, because right now, bicycle parking is included as a community amenity, but now that it's going to be a requirement for all uses, it will no longer be considered an amenity, so if the developer chooses to install decorative bicycle parking, such as this one, it could count as an amenity.
Item number seven there, you have one space for every forty students for schools?
Yes.
That jumped out at me. I know we didn't, we talked about it a bit at the planning meeting, but it just seems like it's really light, and I guess the question I do have is, in all of this, is there consideration about what, where electric bikes are going? I know Holland, I read an article that, I think it was last year, in Holland, they spent more money on electric bikes than on regular bikes, and it's kind of a wave of the future, and the students possibly going more towards that. And the other part of it is, I guess, is would be electrical outlets, so that you could, they could plug in their chargers. But that's just a thought that I had. I mean, it's just, I know this is for today, but what's going to happen for tomorrow, especially when we more or less drastically change our mode of transportation from the car to some of these alternate vehicles, such as bicycles.
Do we charge for electricity, like the electric vehicle charging stations, or the...
No, we don't. When we went through it, and we looked at charging for the electricity, it was hardly worth going through all of the hoops that you had to go through, and the cost to even set the thing up, so we opted not to. And the other reason we didn't do that is, was to try to promote people using the stations and to kind of as a little asset for the downtown. stations and to, kind of as a little asset for the downtown business district. I remember when we first put that in, the first day, some guy came here from Timbuktu someplace, and he says, "I saw that," and he says, "That's why I'm here, because I can make a home now." So it, it, it was used the first day, so it, it was a good asset, I think.
Well, for the school parking, we're, we're gonna do some more analysis on that. We're meeting with the principals in the coming weeks to talk about bicycling and, and walking around the schools, so we're gonna reassess the demand for bicycle parking, and then if we find that there is a greater need, then we can, then we'll increase that requirement definitely.
I, I think we're gonna see it evolve fairly quickly in the next few years. I would think, when I was a child, which is a long time ago, we had bike racks at my elementary school, and then they were loaded, and there was a lot of them. So I, I think we're gonna evolve back to that, maybe as the electric bike comes in, into play. We'll see. Thank you.
Sure. And then for the e-bikes, I'm gonna do some more research and present you all with another memo similar to the EV parking memo, to see if, how we can move forward with that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Real quick, the hospital parking. I was reading the comments, obviously people don't ride their bike to the hospital, it'd be more of an employee. I was reading this comment here from the VP of Construction in Wake Med. He, am I reading this the right way? He doesn't really find it necessary to have?
Or he, at first, I was thinking that it would be based on the square footage of the hospital, but he said that it's more appropriate, or he said it's not appropriate to do it based on the square footage, more on the number of employees, so we changed it to make it for four spaces or spaces for 1% of employees at planned capacity rather than the size of the hospital, since that doesn't really give us a good measure of the demand for bicycle parking. And then my last slide just goes through our proposed bicycle parking design and location requirements. So the first would set a cap on the, on the minimum amount of bicycle parking that can be required, and then there are some more requirements on the location of bicycle parking and the lighting and the distribution of bicycle parking around the site. And that's all I have, but I'll try to answer any questions.
Any follow-up questions?
What is the bicycle requirement for a commercial use like auto sales?
For auto sale, well, for all commercial uses, if it's not specifically listed in this document, it's gonna be set at two spaces, so one rack.
It's two spaces.
Don't wanna go too prematurely, but is there a motion?
We got a public hearing.
Oh, oh, public hearing, right, okay. It's a forma, it's formality because no one signed up, but I will open the public hearing and refer the, refer you to the empty sheet here, so close the, close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
I appreciate the thoroughness, because it does seem to be quite a lot of research to go in, going into this, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Make a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right, there's a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a second? Any discussion on the motion to approve the amendments?
Well, I do have a little bit. Was there any discussion, and I think we've talked about this in the past, maybe in planning committee, about parking in residential neighborhoods and lengthening driveways to allow more cars to park where they live instead of on the curbs, or, we're getting a lot of complaints about people parking on streets.
I didn't look at that specifically for this update, but I would...
We, we did pass a UDO amendment some time ago that set a minimum length of the driveway from the back of curb to the garage at a minimum of 20 feet to ensure that a car will fit wholly within a driveway and not spill over the sidewalk. It's also 20 feet from the back of sidewalk where there's a sidewalk present, so...
Where did we increase that from? Do you remember, was it...
There was not a specific standard, as I recall. It might have been 18 if there was, but we changed that to, to 20 feet.
20 feet enough for two cars standing next to each other, or just one?
Just one.
Just one.
Smart car, maybe.
Smart car. Yeah. All right, well, we've got, so that was your comment?
Yeah, that's, that's.
All right. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Michelle, thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate the, yeah, I appreciate the research. Clearly, you did data research, and I appreciate that a lot. Times change, people's driving habits change, there may be opportunities for further changes down the road as we've heard discussions come up, and, but we might at this time request your advice on where we might, would hang this sign that we've got for you, for your office. So if you could come up here. Now, we, we certainly want to encourage parking, although this sign would discourage people from hanging around in your office too long, so you can get more work done, but we'd like to give this to you on behalf of the council.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And the town manager wants a, a picture here. There you go. Enjoy walking through the town.
Good job, great job.
And props to Council McGant for making sure that happens, so credit where credit's due. All right, with that, now we move to public hearing number four. Public hearing number four is some more UDO amendments for uses, new uses.
Number five.
I'm sorry, five. I misspoke.
At least you're not in hell thinking.
No, but I'm still partly on vacation.
Okay. So this UDO amendment is a proposal by Stuart Jones of Jones and Knopf Engineering to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to add three new uses to the ordinance and related development standards. So the three uses that are proposed are commissary, automotive accessory sales and installation, and manufacturing, processing, and minor. Each of the uses are proposed in the same zoning districts, the tech flex district and the LI, light industrial district. I'll go through the definitions for each. A commissary is a commercial kitchen where food service providers can go to store, cook, and prepare foods. These foods are not available for sale or consumption at the commissary. Typical use for a commissary would be for commercial food trucks, bakeries, and caterers. Use that doesn't neatly fall into any use category now and is definitely something that would be in demand in the town of Apex. The next use is the automotive accessory sales and service, and this is a cell installation of aftermarket products for vehicle customization such as window tinting, stereo systems, and the like. And finally, the third use is very similar to our existing manufacturing and processing use, but this is a small-scale version of that, and it limits the size at 10,000 square feet, and the only other significant modification to the definition, which is almost identical, is that it does not allow the retail sales of products produced on the site. This is solely for manufacturing, processing, and distribution of those goods. The next section of this are the supplemental standards for these uses. For commissary, we are proposing that food trucks and carts shall be parked to the side or rear of the building and shall not be visible from a public right-of-way. For the automotive accessory sales and service, there are three proposed use standards. Use shall be conducted entirely within a building in closed structure. Such use shall not have a mechanical lift and would not offer services in the repair and maintenance category, and no service bay door shall be oriented toward any adjacent residential district or any adjacent public street. And there are no use standards proposed for the manufacturing and processing minor use. And then we are proposing the land use classes for buffers. Class five use, which is where most of our retail uses fall, is where we are proposing automotive accessory sales and installation to be placed, and commissary and manufacturing and processing minor would be placed in the most intense category of class six. And finally, kind of back to parking, we are proposing parking standards. Now, manufacturing, processing minor is not listed because all production uses fall under Schedule B, and those standards are not proposed to change, and that sets standards based on the office area and the storage area, warehousing area. Automotive accessory sales and installation, we are proposing at one per 300 square feet of sales or office area plus one per service bay, and then a minimum of two bicycle spaces. And for commissary, this use can vary widely with the parking demand because some commissaries allow for food prep on-site and others don't, it's just for storage of materials and supplies, and since the parking demand can vary, as such, we are proposing that to be handled by Schedule, Schedule C, which leaves that determination up to the planning director. And then there would be a minimum of two bicycle spaces required. And that is the end of the presentation. Staff did recommend, does recommend approval of the amendments, and the planning board reviewed this item at their July 9th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the amendment. If you have any questions, any questions that you may have?
I have some questions. So the, the food truck that's included under the commissary, is that talking about something that is gonna be permanent on-site, or is this talking about temporary food trucks?
So this is, food trucks are required to have a commissary as part of their health department permit, so this is where they store their supplies, store their foods in refrigerators, freezers, whatnot, and like I said, said a moment ago, some commissaries allow for food prep, so it's essentially like a kitchen, but there's no public coming to the site for sales or to, to eat. A lot of commissaries also allow for overnight storage or parking of food trucks or food carts such as a hot dog cart, so it provides a place for that to be stored overnight instead of in someone's driveway where they live or at another business. So oftentimes, some food trucks will use a restaurant, will strike a deal with a restaurant to use their kitchen in the off-hours, and that will be their commissary, but this provides basically a one-stop shop for that type of scenario.
Okay. If I can tag on to that, just for clarification, so the commissary is not in the food truck, but it is a place where the food truck can go for storage?
It's a permanent location.
Right.
Okay.
So the commissary is permanent, not the truck?
Mm-hmm.
Is that where you were going, or...
Yeah, I mean, what caught me was the, where it basically said that the food trucks don't need to be visible from a public right-of-way.
So that gives it the parking lot, basically, where these food trucks would be parked if they're stored overnight, for example. There are a few of these, not many in the triangle. There's, I know, one or two in Raleigh, there's a relatively new one in Durham, and I looked at the facilities where those were located, and that's pretty typical, and also looking at other cities outside of this market.
Okay.
This is really an aside. How do we manage food trucks, like, when they are actually on-site selling food? I saw one, there's one down on Wendy's by the brewery there. Do, do they get a permit for that, or do, do we, they just, can they just kind of pull up and say, "Hey, I'm here"?
Well, I know, like, the hot dog carts get a permit from the police department. Planning is not involved in that permitting process, but there is a permit that the town issues for that. I'm assuming they, it's handled the same for food trucks.
Correct, and then they're inspected by the county health department.
Could you explain class five and class six on the, was it landscape buffers, or...
Right, so basically, all of our uses in the UDO are divided into six classes based on intensity, and so you have agriculture, golf courses, and a very large lot, single-family at a class one level, and then as the use intensifies, whether through density for residential or intensity of non-residential use, they go up in class. So most of our retail uses, I believe, vehicle sales as well, maybe are in the class five category, and the more intense uses like the industrial uses and more flex space-type uses where you might have larger trucks coming in and out are the class six uses.
Then that correlates to the, the buffers and the landscape buffers around the perimeter of these places?
It, it does. So where you have, a class six would require a higher, the highest buffer adjacent to a class one, but between class five and six, there's no buffer required. So it's not, there are some classes that don't require buffers from one another, and this is an example between five and six.
So if you had five here and six here, and they're different businesses, you're saying there's no buffer needed between?
Correct.
All right, thank you, and at this point, I'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Jones pops up to come to the front.
Well, since I proposed it, I figured I better say something.
Good idea.
I do wanna say thanks to Amanda and the staff for being flexible while we worked through some of these definitions and coming up with these new uses. As an introduction to these amendments, we're currently working on three different business parks, different phases, different parks, but we're working on three different business parks, and these specific uses have come up at one or more of the parks. So we're proposing these new uses to be added to the UDO. It's kind of a recurring thing that we're hearing in these business parks as businesses are changing, and some of them are really unique, so we're trying to find spaces where they fit. Again, this is us trying to accommodate new and different businesses that don't fit in some of the categories that are already in the UDO. I think everybody understands automotive accessory use, the commissary y'all asked about, and we did provide a, you know, there's a definition that Amanda read. There's something on the website, on one of the commissary websites, I just wanted to read this, 'cause it kind of gives you an idea of how they share. Most food truck owners entering the world of commissaries start out with shared space in a commercial kitchen. With a shared space commissary, you and several other food truck owners, caterers, or chefs will have access to the same group kitchen. Overall, shared commissary spaces are cheaper than having your own private space, making them a draw for new business owners who are just entering the industry and looking to keep their costs down. However, you will have to coordinate your schedule with everyone else who is sharing the space so that you don't double-book the kitchen. So that kind of gives you an idea of how these things work. This was all new to me, too, but evidently, there's a huge need for it, and it's not just food trucks, it's caterers. They have new requirements where they're having to meet health department guidelines, and so this shared kitchen would be a health department-inspected, rated kitchen. And those get really expensive, so you can imagine if somebody's doing catering of cupcakes, say, and they only need that kitchen for a few hours a day, they don't, really can't afford this commercial kitchen kind of concept. So this is a way to kind of address, address that issue. The minor manufacturing and processing use has also come up several times in these business parks, all kinds of varieties of small manufacturing, assembly, and processing businesses that the only way to address them and make them fall into the UDO was to put them in the major category, which weren't those major manufacturing and processing was not allowed in tech flex. So it was a way to, you know, again, address some of these smaller uses, and so by cutting it off at 10,000 square feet, that kind of fits in this office flex kind of thing that we're seeing a lot of people use. And then these spaces can be customized for these specific uses. Some of them need, you know, clean air spaces, some of them just need storage, and so it's a, it's a way to kind of adapt and, and use these spaces differently than probably any of us probably envisioned. So as we continue to try and encourage and welcome new businesses into the area, we think it's important to update the UDO to accommodate these uses and provide more opportunities for them to find a place to locate in relevant zoning districts. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any more.
I have a little side question then.
Okay.
Food trucks, in industrial areas, when I worked in an industrial area, they had a little restaurant, small mini-restaurant, but do you guys set up availabilities for the food trucks to come? Because I know if you're in a really good-sized industrial park where I was working, it's hardly worth, you know, you have a half an hour, an hour to go to lunch, or you wanna just grab a bite. Do you, do you set those up for food trucks also, like, with the curb back from the road or something, so they can slide in, or how does that work?
No, we haven't really done any of that. Most of the food truck operations that have gone on have just been in parking lots that are overparked or something. that are overparked or something like that. Now that we've cut the parking down, maybe, maybe we won't have that anymore.
I guess I was thinking of one on Wendy's where they just pulled up on the side of the road and everybody.
Well, that's, that's where a lot of them do it, but usually it's a parking lot. And um, I think that as these business parks that we're talking about develop, I think you're going to see more and more of that food truck kind of operation so those people don't have to leave their office. You know, they can just walk out front and have a variety of, of food options without having to get in their car or ride their EV bicycle.
Nice one.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, not anymore.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, that being the last uh, sign in, I'll close the public hearing and further matter back to council for a possible motion.
I'll make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thanks. I learned something new, commissary, like a timeshare kitchen.
Basically, you're right.
All right, new business number one. Uh, since we have no old business and no unfinished business, Ms. Rayfield is going to talk to us about the Winston Master subdivision plan.
Hello. Uh, so this is the Winston Master subdivision located at nineteen twelve Kelly Road. Uh, this should look a little familiar. Uh, so this includes those pieces, um, here that were.
She just made that update to the map in the last thirty minutes.
It is magic behind the scenes, I tell you.
That is crazy.
Um, so again, site still located in the same place, west, on the west side of Kelly Road, um, in between Apex Barbecue and Olive Chapel Road. Uh, the site is nine point five one acres and is, um, proposing ten lots. Um, and this shows the zoning previously, the rural residential, so those are those little notches there, but we will update that. And this shows the twenty thirty land use map recommending the medium density residential on which this, um, does fit that. Uh, the site is currently wooded and vacant, or wooded might be a stretch. Um, but I'll just go ahead and put this up here while I go through everything. Um, so, low over nine and a half acres, ten lots. Um, the density then is one point oh five units per acre. RCA to be provided is point one nine acre, that is two percent, um, required for the mass grading. Um, we've been over the zoning, it's got Beaver Creek subdivision to the north, Toad Hollow subdivision here to the south, um, and Kelly Grove subdivision, um, as well in the area. Um, let's see, the applicant conducted the neighborhood meetings on December twentieth two thousand seventeen and June twentieth two thousand eighteen. Those reports are in your packet. Again, this site will provide two percent of RCA, um, due to the proposed mass grading. Uh, the project will extend public facilities. Um, the architectural standards on November twenty first two thousand seventeen, town council approved rezoning seventeen twenty-three and earlier today, um, eighteen, um, CZ twenty four, excuse me, fourteen, um, which includes the following conditions, all of those are listed in your packet. Um, again, those are typical architectural standards as well as the additional ones that were presented, um, back in November. Uh, perimeter buffers, uh, it's a ten-foot type B buffer around the perimeter, there is a thirty-foot thoroughfare type B buffer as well here along Kelly Road. Um, because of the size of the subdivision, this is not brought forward to the Parks Rec Cultural Resources Advisory Commission and instead is Fee and Lou. Uh, this is, subdivision plan is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan as far as access and circulation goes. There will be a full movement point of access here onto Kelly Road. Um, there will be no connections, it does not connect to Toad Hollow based on the zoning conditions that were approved in November. Um, it does meet all of the standards of the UDO. Planning staff recommends approval of the subdivision plan. Uh, planning board also recommended approval at their meeting last week. I will be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Is there sufficient room if Kelly needs to be a little wider there?
Yes, so the right-of-way for the, the project does include the, the thoroughfare widening plan, so yes.
Okay, and for the flag lots, if you want to pardon the term, those two down in the further south area, making those fit in, uh, from a planning department perspective, what's, what's the, what's your take on that as a layout?
Well, the building setback will, will be back here where these dash lines are because it, you can't have the, um, building setback has to be where the lot width is at, minimum lot width is, I think, fifty feet in this, um, in this case. So essentially this is where that hits the fifty feet and that's where that building setback will, uh, take place.
Extra long driveway.
Yeah, I, I know, I know generally people try not to do flag type lots and, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the term, but they call it that because of the shape, sort of looks like a flag off a pole, upside down.
I figure that's what you mean.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but I, no, I mean, I, I didn't know if we had sort of a more formal policy on them, but I'm, I can see how this is a, this is a way to use the property and make it work. So, I don't have any other question. Oh, I do. Is that, instead of a standard cul-de-sac, is that more of a little traffic circle, like a one-way circle?
I suppose you could look at it that way. So essentially what's located in here is the, uh, mail kiosk unit. Obviously it'll be a small box, um, for these ten lots as well as the guest parking for the mail kiosk. So that's what's in here, so yes, it is different than the norm.
They're not going to have a nice big tree in the middle of that thing?
Uh, it's gonna have to be.
I, I know, I, I just think, uh, I always thought cul-de-sacs where you widen them out and put a center thing in, you put shading, shading the area, but that's okay.
Might be a big tree out there, they could build it around.
It could be, you don't know. Neither do I.
Mr. Jones probably looking at it.
I, I got many trees there.
No, no, the, the trees that are onsite are located, uh, adjacent to the roadway and, and they've worked at, I'm trying to save these trees before the, you know, in the meantime before that road is widened.
Well, they could put a solar PV thing then if they're not going to have a tree in that center thing. Um, did you have questions?
Put a plug on there for everybody's bicycles.
That's right. Good point. Um, question, on the northwest corner, I guess, in the upper left, that's a retention pond, I assume?
Yes.
Even though it's this big a lot, I guess we have to have, how, how are you going to get access? How's the access to that if they have to clean it out?
Um, so right here is, um, an easement to that, which, which is also an access easement.
Okay.
So if we need to get there, we'll be able to.
All right.
Are they manipulating the existing ponds already there or are they having to, I'm assuming they can keep some of it and they have to clean it out or is it, as is, does it meet the standards for?
I don't believe as is, the applicant can, I, I will, I mean, that's not my, um, purview to review, so I, I, I can't speak to the changes that are required.
I'll be glad to answer.
All right.
Um, the existing pond will get drained and then reshaped, but we'll, we'll use the existing dam. Um, but the existing pond is like four times the size it needs to be and.
Yeah, yeah. How about the addition there, what do you guys find to do with those?
Um, they get.
Ask them for them.
That's a good point, yes.
They get removed and relocated. So, one of the developers has already got his eye on another sized pond that he would like to capture them and move them to another pond.
What's the average size of these lots?
Average size, the minimum size is twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Minimum.
Minimum is half acre.
Yeah, and so some of these are.
It's the West lawyer's lot size.
Some of these are close to an acre.
Yeah, okay.
Nice.
But they're, they're large lots.
Yeah.
So you're going to allow access for the kids to go fishing in the pond if they want to, once it gets rebuilt?
Um, I don't know that these kids will want to fish in a pond, I don't know.
Well, kids get, when they get really old, people get really old like me, they get the kids again, you know that.
Oh, and you did ask about the cul-de-sac. So interesting thing on this is that the interior island is about the same size as a regular cul-de-sac. That's how large this, that's how large this circle is. Um, and it's two-way traffic, so it's that, it's that large, but we needed that to get the frontage for the lots around there.
Scale throws you off a little bit.
The scale really.
Looking at this, that's ten acres, almost, almost ten acres that one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Parcel.
So the road is extra wide with extra lanes and a median, um, so it's just a different, it's a different shape and different size and different scale to what you're used to seeing.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Jones or for Ms. Rayfield?
So I have a question. So is the plan to, um, I think I heard masquerade, are you guys masquerading this site or are you allowing the individual lot purchasers to, to save what they want and put their house in their lot?
Well, there's essentially no trees on the inside of this property. The trees are on the perimeter. This is an open field, part of the, you know.
Eric, can you, I'm sorry to, um, can you back us up to, you have an overhead view that shows like satellite imagery? I think we can, it quick, we can quickly see there's not a lot of trees except down by the pond.
So I'm assuming the road comes in right there where the field off of Kelly Road.
Correct.
The field and the trees are, the tree line?
Correct.
Kind of comes in right there, so those will obviously be taken out and you come to the roundabout, so there's a lot of that, I guess the north side would have lots with some foliage on it.
Well, the, the other issue with this site is it's fairly steep across.
Yeah.
So it's going to be hard to get, you know, with the size of these homes and the driveway access, it's hard to get, um, you know, a building footprint big enough. So we'll probably wind up grading the, the south, south side, cutting some of that dirt and then filling some of the low side. We also have to get the sewer to work, so.
Yeah, okay.
But, but most of that's just small pines, it's not, the bigger pines are actually out on Kelly Road and that's why we worked hard to save that so that that view along Kelly Road stays pretty much intact. And we are saving the historic house, the not historic slash historic house.
Is that being moved somewhere?
No, um, it's on a separate lot. It's already been recombined into a separate lot and so Joey's going to sell that as a separate, separate lot. It just worked out in the layouts between the two subdivisions, they worked out well and so we kind of redesigned to save that house. So it'll have water and sewer and half acre lot with that house. So again, we've kind of preserved that view corridor along Kelly Road as much intact as we have, as we can.
Any other questions? All right, thanks Stuart.
Sure.
Um, at this time I'll ask council if there is a motion.
Well, if I may, I, I want to go by question number one, the applicant's response is, this is for the meeting that they had with the neighbors, and the applicant's response, the question was, can the subdivision be not approved? And the answer was, as long as the subdivision plans meet the requirements of the town of Apex, they must approve, be approved by the council. I'm going to go with item number one and make a motion that we approve.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion to approve?
I have a second.
All right, we have a second. Uh, discussion on the motion.
Uh, thank you for your efforts to preserve that view along the road, I think that's um, important.
All right, not hearing anything else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, that concludes new business. Uh, we now, um, just, uh, as you can see, we have a closed session and then a work session. And um, just before we recess for that, I want to let everyone know that we'll be in closed session, uh, for the next X number of minutes TBD. And when we re-adjourn, we will re-adjourn in the conference room on the second floor for our, uh, work session. Thank you. We'll now take a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of, um, consulting with the attorney related to attorney-client privilege.
Should I move to you?
Second.
All right, in discussion. All in favor going to closed session, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we're now going to closed session.